Good morning, everybody. We're going to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, May 5th. If you would, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, seeing no one here for public comment and seeing no one on the phone for public comment, we'll move to the consideration of approval of the minutes from April 28th.
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 28th Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. All right, we're going to begin with a proclamation and we're going to welcome up our sheriff, Brian Sampson, and we're going to look to proclaim next week, May 10th through 16th, as National Police Week, and then May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Center County. So, we are thankful the sheriff is with us here today, and Brian, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. I'll try to get through this. My glass is all fogging up when I'm reading this, but please join us, join us for Center County Law and Enforcement Virtual Ceremony the week of May 10th through May 16th, 2020, through several different digital virtual mediums on local law enforcement, Facebook pages and websites, where we honor 146 men and women who gave their lives in the service and protection of fellow citizens. We also wish to, we could come together to remember all the fallen officers, but with the difficult and unprecedented times we are in, we still want to honor their services. Please take a few minutes to view our virtual ceremony and remember that we appreciate the community's support. We're going to put some stuff on our Facebook pages, try to keep it to three minutes, two, three minutes, share all the names of the officers. Really like to thank Ryan Hendrick, who, and him and I have been working on this together, but he had the idea on this. I think it's a great idea. Their selfless acts of courage were especially demonstrated without hesitation time and time again in 2019. This year's virtual ceremony stands as a reminder that every hour of every day of every year, those men and women who take on the responsibility of safety of society, quietly and without fanfare, they face danger every day to protect us. I wish everyone, everyone of us in law enforcement made a commitment, knowing the full well that someday they may require making an ultimate sacrifice. Next week, we pay special honor to those who made that sacrifice. Please join us next week in the virtual ceremony. It's going to be pretty good, so we're going to do some bagpipes in it. Wish we could be at the courthouse doing this, but the times are changing right now, so we're going to try this this year and see how it goes, and we'll be with you next year for a regular ceremony, hopefully at the courthouse on the week of May 15th.
It's always a solemn event when you do it, Brian, and I think with the social media aspect you're going to take, you're going to reach a lot of people, and they can still play tribute to the fallen men and women. So, really thank you for being so able to transition to a new format and do this, and again, next year, we'll make it even bigger and better, so, thank you.
We looked at different things, different ways of doing it, maybe having a small and videotaping at the courthouse, or we, virtual is the way to go. It should be available. I think we're going to start planning it either Sunday or Monday. As soon as I get proclamation, that's going to be in the virtual ceremony, so if you guys can sign it, I'll leave today and take it with me, and I'll put, have them, I'll scan it and send it to them, and then we'll go from there. So, I appreciate it, and take a moment to watch it. It's going to be, it's pretty neat, so, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Share it and get the word out. Any other comments for our sheriff?
No, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and also want to recognize that last Saturday was the 115th anniversary of the founding of the Pennsylvania State Police. So, as we enter the month of May, we have, we have lots of, lots of things to celebrate and lots, lots of folks to honor and remember, so.
What was it, 1906?
1905.
1905.
Hard work, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Your deputies, and we very much appreciate all of our first responders, including our peace officers.
I just want to throw something else out there, if you don't mind. Every Wednesday, we've been going down in the sheriff's office and DA's office, telephone police, and we're having the soup kitchen reach out to anyone who wants to come, stop by for a cup of soup, and usually there's a bread or crackers with it. We're down there handing out for an hour, usually 50 cups of soup or more, so, stop by.
Where is there?
YMCA, in front of the YMCA. Oh my goodness, I didn't know the address.
That's right.
100 blocks of West High Street.
High Street.
So, yeah, West High Street, so, that's all I, thank you.
Great, okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So, we'll be sure to give this to you. Are you going to, if you're going to be here for the whole meeting, we'll give it to you after?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, super. All right, so, we look for a motion to adopt proclamation number nine.
Motion to adopt proclamation number nine of 2020, proclaiming May 10th through 16th as National Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Center County.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay. All right, moving into our COVID-19 topics, we're going to start with personnel. We have four items to consider, and we'll turn it over to Margaret.
Thank you very much. There are four items, as Commissioner Pipe said, under personnel related to our furlough status of employees. The first three items are requesting return for individuals, recall for individuals. The first two are actually for bringing individuals back to assist in our Elections Department, our Elections Office. So, the first one is to, for you to consider approval of the reinstatement of Jessica Heron from full-time furlough to regular full-time status effective May 6th through June 2nd. She will come back and be assigned to the Elections Office. And the second is consider approval of the reinstatement of Samantha Reese from reduced hour furlough to regular full-time status effective Wednesday, May 6th, 2020, and she also will go to the Elections Office. And the third request is consider approval of the reinstatement of Linda Marshall, Senior Planner One, Housing and Community Development, from reduced hours furlough to regular full-time status effective May 11th. As you know, Linda is retiring, leaving Center County Government effective June 1st, and bringing her back full-time will allow her to have two weeks of overlap with the newly appointed housing planner for that office. And the fourth item, and this is for the sheriff's office, and the sheriff is here and he could speak to this, is for you to consider approval of the reduced hours of Richard Bowes, Deputy Sheriff, Airport Security Two, from regular full-time status effective May 6th. And that is, of course, due to the change in the airport operations.
If you were having regular flights in the morning, now they really do sound special weekend.
Thank you, Sheriff.
So, I'd look for your review and approval of those four actions.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Margaret. Any questions, comments on these four items? Okay. I'd just say, we're really appreciative of, especially Samantha and Jessica, for being flexible and willing to come back into the Elections Office. We're seeing an unprecedented number of mail-in ballots, and Commissioner Dershowm has the numbers, and I think we'll detail them a little bit later on, but it's, we really appreciate them coming back. And again, we want to get people back to work, and we have a real surge in that office, so we really appreciate their flexibility there. So, we'd have, we have a motion for those items.
Motion to approve the four items for personnel under COVID-19.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, we just had this as a, as a constant discussion for reopening Center County. We are aware that on Friday of last week, the Governor and the Secretary of Health announced Center County would be moving from the, as they say, red phase to the yellow phase, beginning this Friday at midnight. And in addition, yesterday evening, the Governor had released guidance for those counties, so we're still reading through them, processing them, and we'll be able to provide guidance to our staff and employees, department heads, elected officials, as we go into the next several days, and hopefully by the, by the, of course, by the start of next week, but hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have more guidance for them. But we're encouraging all businesses that are going to be starting to reopen and get back to work to still continue those social distancing guidelines, to follow the guidelines that are set out, again, by the Governor, CDC, Secretary of Health. The longer we can make sure that we are practicing those social distancing techniques and methods, the longer we'll stay in the yellow phase and ultimately get to that green phase, so it's so important. So, we're encouraging everybody to do that, and again, let's support our local businesses as they reopen. Let's try to find ways that we can, again, practice the social distancing and the masking, patronize them, utilize them as we see fit. So, again, we're hopeful, there's some hope at the end of this week, but again, again, we should remain very vigilant as we move forward. But those are my thoughts. I'd be happy to, if there are any thoughts from fellow commissioners on this item?
Well, I think the one thing is, there were a lot of counties that wish that they were in our position, and we're going to have the opportunity to move to the next phase on Friday, and I do believe that it's very important that everybody remember that we have certain guidelines we need to follow. You know, you indicated social distancing, wearing masks, being respectful of this whole process. And I know there's a lot of folks out there that are frustrated with it, but the quicker we get through this process, the quicker we can go into the green phase and move ahead. So, I would encourage everybody to, as Michael indicated, be vigilant and follow the guidelines so we can get through this period of history as quickly as possible.
I did review the Governor's guidelines last night. I forwarded them on to all of the chambers of commerce in Center County. Thankfully, our small businesses and local businesses will begin to reopen here on Friday. As the, my fellow two commissioners mentioned, please follow social distancing, wear your masks, and be patient. Some of these businesses have been open for seven or eight weeks now, and they're not going to be at 100% capacity and service levels on day one, or two, or three, or even four. So, a lot of patience, and, you know, as Commissioner Dershowm said, let's follow the guidelines so that we can get to green sooner rather than later. We certainly don't want to go backwards to red. Thanks.
All right, and we'd be happy to take questions at the end of our meeting on this and any other topics related to COVID-19. We're going to move now into our contract section. We're going to turn it over to Margaret to discuss, and then we'll have Jeff add in as well. So, Margaret, please.
Thank you very much. So, the agenda item for your consideration this morning is an agreement with the Center Region Council of Governments designating the COG hazmat team as one of the county's hazardous materials response contractors under Act 165. This agreement shall continue in full force and effect until terminated by either party upon one year's written notice to the other. So, for some background on this, Center County is fortunate to have two hazmat response teams here in our county, Penn State since 1993, at least that's the date of our most recent contract, and Eagle Towing. The university has been in conversation with the Center Region Council of Governments now for the better part of a year about transitioning their hazmat program over to the Center Region Council of Governments. For all intents and purposes, the two entities have been working jointly for some time now, and because of staffing issues, the Center Region folks have really been maintaining and staffing that hazmat team. The university, in accordance with the contract they have with the county dated December of 1993, did provide notification to us, the one-year notification, that that is their intent, and they talked about how they've been working collaboratively with the Center Region Council of Governments to make this a smooth transition. Jeff and I have had the opportunity to not only meet with the Penn State representatives, but with the Center Region representatives as well, sometimes separately and sometimes all of us together, but this agreement would replace the contract we have with Penn State and keep the resource available to Center County. So, Jeff, if you wanted to add to that?
As Margaret stated, we're fortunate to have two certified hazmat teams in our county, and that's important with the transportation hub that we've become with two interstates and State Route 322. Most of our hazmat calls are related to transportation, and, you know, so, having the two teams puts us in a much better light as far as being able to handle any type of hazardous material spill. So, we're fortunate to have that, and we welcome this.
Any questions?
Does the county still maintain the discretion as to assigning hazmat providers to various situations? In other words, do we still make the call as to who goes out on, on various scenes?
So, the current arrangement is that the incident commander makes the call from the scene and communicates then directly with our Director of Emergency Management. That's the way it's been set up for about, what, the, almost a year now, maybe, not quite?
About a year.
So, and then Jeff goes to the sites. He goes to all of the hazmat incidents throughout the county.
And the alphas respond, report to the Center Region Council of Governments. Is that my understanding, or vice versa? I'm just trying to make sure that there's not a conflict there. If, I think there needs to be some, some level of distancing between the folks who are making the call and the folks that provide the service, and if one, if both are wanting the same, I would have some concern over that. That would be my only, my only conversation.
I'm not sure. I personally don't know the structure of the Center Region with their emergency management and how the alphas factor into that. I'm not, I'm not aware of if they are.
Do you understand what my, what my concern would be? In other words, if they say, okay, I have a choice of this group or this group, and I work for, for one of those groups, there's a, there's a, there could be a perceived conflict of interest there.
Could be, yeah.
So, that's why I believe we need to maintain discretion as to, as to who provides those services for Center County, here in the Commissioner's office and through the Emergency Management Office.
In terms of the benefit or the, why these, what, in terms of the individuals that you're talking about in Alpha, what would be the concern?
I'm not saying there, my only concern is that obviously, if, if you have a choice of, of who you're going to pick, and one of them is, is yourself, there is, there could be a perception that perhaps there is a conflict there.
I'm still comfortable with the arrangement we have currently that has the, the incident commander making the call, and if there was ever, it's sort of like a feedback loop where if the incident commander chooses an entity, and then we learn after, during an after-action report, that there was, there was, they were not supposed to, that was not the entity that they should have had responding, we've always said and maintained that we would end that arrangement, and we would go back to the old structure where it was EMA who was leading that. I'm, so, I, they're all aware of that, so if there was any conflict of interest and we would have that occur, I'm certainly happy to entertain going, going backwards.
I'm just bringing it up as a, as an obvious point of discussion, because whenever you're appointing somebody who, who has the capability of appointing themselves, I'm always very leery of that, so I would, I would just be, make that, make the board aware of that.
When I think the, the Council of Governments, again, I haven't seen the structure of how they're going to be setting this up, but I don't think that the individuals that are going to be, that are leading Alpha and are in positions of, you know, the chief or the, you know, first chief, however their leadership is structured, that those individuals are also going to be the leadership of the COG hazmat team as well. So, I don't think they're going to be the same individuals.
I can't speak to any of that. I can, I can only say that just the perception is, needs, needs to be very clear, that there's no conflict there. So, just bringing it up as a point of discussion.
We are moving it to consent, so we would have an extra week to consider that and learn a little bit more about their structures, but I think it's a fair point for us to keep in mind.
Though we worked on the current structure for over a year, the county still has oversight because we're supposed to be called in to every single incident. And to Commissioner Pipe's point, if it looks like there's some self-referrals potentially going on, then, you know, we, we have final authority, we can make changes.
Okay. I'm just bringing it up as a...
Right. And, and I don't necessarily think that Alpha reports to COG or that COG reports to Alpha. We might want to be careful that there might not be a couple alphas who are leaders of the hazmat team. We may want to watch out for that.
Well, I'm just bringing it up as a...
I'd just add that I think that sometimes the determination by the incident commander about which response team is called to a scene, and Jeff would certainly know this, is based on the geography, based on the type of the spill, that kind of thing, and we know that we have a really, really large county, so it sometimes falls to that kind of a...
I'm having trouble hearing you, Margaret. The, the only thing I would say is, just legally, we as county commissioners are responsible for the operation of hazmat responsibilities in the county, so I'm just bringing it up as part of my, my duty of, as to the job I hold.
We can certainly monitor that, keep that in mind. Again, we have a week to consider it and get a better handle on that, but again, this is per the contract, the year notification, so they did that, and we're just following along in that process.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments on this specific item? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to add it to next week's consent?
Motion to add the agreement with Center Region Council of Governments to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving into Human Services, for our quarterly report to CYS, I think, are we looking for a motion to table this item?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The request of children and youth.
All right, motion to table item number one under Human Services, the Children and Youth Quarterly Report.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on tabling this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay. For Transportation, we, yes, please?
Yes. This item is a fiscal year 2018-19 Medical Assistance Transportation Program allocation from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services in the amount of $666,692 for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th of 2019. And the years are not incorrect on this. This actually is a reconciliation. They match up what services were provided and the reporting that was provided by our Transportation Office, and this represents the final reconciliation report and indicates that we have followed all the guidelines and the regulations that needed to be followed. I would also point out that this is a little bit higher than what we thought we might receive, so that is also very good news. It actually represents an additional $75,631 beyond the original amount that we thought we would be paid from the Department of Transportation.
Margaret, any comments, questions for Margaret? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I did want to say quickly, I, I think we can talk publicly now about the cooperation between our Transportation Department, the YMCA, and the Air Patrol to begin to deliver meals throughout Center County to people who are homebound.
Oh, okay. I, I, I'm not sure. I...
I, I know that the YMCA folks met with John Warren yesterday, and they were talking about some sort of arrangement, but I didn't know what had been finalized yet, so I'm not really up on that, but I think, I think that there are some things that they're working through right now, but yes.
So, I commend the Transportation Department, the YMCA, and the Air Patrol for working together to plan to deliver meals for people who are homebound and shut in in Center County. But I will make the motion to approve the 2018-2019 Medical Assistance Transportation Program allocation from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. And a grant?
Okay, this is a, an amendment to the Veterans Trust Fund Grant Agreement with the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs to extend the period of performance for seven months to terminate now on December 31st of 2020. And the purpose, the reason behind this is that the office was not able to spend all of the funds and conduct the programming that was supposed to be conducted due to the COVID-19 situation, so the state has, will agree to an extension of that program.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Questions, comments on that? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the amendment with the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Margaret. For a consent agenda, is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. We have one personnel item, and that would be for considering the approval, the personnel requisition for full-time corrections officer. Is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time corrections officer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay. We do want to note that the President and Judge has approved the personnel requisition for Magisterial District Court Secretary in Judge Hans Chambers' office, so we just want to note that, and we would now move to the check run. Commissioner?
Sure. Early average check run of $1,304,477.09 for the check of the week. It's one check to Crosswoods Counseling for a variety of services related to mental health, and that is for $5,976.60. I'll make the motion to approve the check run dated May 1st.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay. We'll turn it over to Commissioner Higgins. I'm sorry, Commissioner Dershowm.
Yes. We have a voter registration report, but before I get to that, I'd like to mention that we have 11,000, approximately 11,500 ballot applications received as of this morning in our Elections Office, and one of the challenges that that presents, of course, is getting them processed and everybody out, getting them out timely for the June 2nd election. That being said, I would really suggest that if you intend to vote absentee or vote by mail, that you get those applications in sooner rather than later. We are processing them, but it is a laborious process, particularly this is our first time, and you just heard a little while ago how we were bringing people back just... a little while ago how we were bringing people back just to process those applications in the Elections Office. But to help us get a speedy count back on June 2, this will be part of that process, is, you know, getting a good head start, getting everybody organized, and certainly getting those ballots into everybody's hands so they can vote. That being said, the governor yesterday had a press conference, and we're going to be having an Election Board meeting after this meeting to discuss some of the ever-changing topics that are involved in the June 2 election. So we'll have lots of conversation about that. But if you want to get those applications in as soon as possible, that would be a great help to us, and I think a great help to our whole system come Election Day. That all being said, my report this morning is we have 109,220 registered voters in Center County. That leads to, that's actually up 14 voters from last report, so we have 46,402 Democratic registrants, 148 Green Party, 670 Libertarian, 14,500 No affiliation, and 42,825 Republican voters. That leaves all others at 4,675 registered voters. The feature party of the day is the bipartisan party again. The bipartisan party has one registered voter, so one of the 4,675, that is one of our parties. So want to make note of them. The polling place in, that we're going to feature today is Potter North, number 70. They voted the Center Hall Lions Club on Route 192. In the last election, there was 1,012 registered voters, 432 ballots cast, which is a voter turnout of 42.69%. And we want to thank the Lions Club for allowing us to use that facility. But the folks that make it happen at Precinct 70, the judge of election is Bambi Joe Homan, the minority inspector is Ann McAllen Brock, the clerks are Renee Shuey, Carrie Shawey, Marjorie Corman, and Jeremy Shawley. So want to thank everybody for their help in allowing us to get through, and I guess we'll be seeing you in a few weeks. There you have it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no announcements at this time, Margaret, any executive sessions?
No executive sessions to report, however, we do need to meet at an executive session.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have the balance of our schedule there. Any questions? Gary?
Briefly in discussing, you said obviously from the red to yellow phase, just getting your quick comments on this, there have been some businesses outside of Center County and other counties currently in the red zone who are defying the order by the governor in reopening, I think, for example, hair salons and stuff. Concern there, obviously, they're stating that business is crippling them, that they're being crippled by not being able to be open. There, if there were to be any businesses, because technically those types of businesses, gyms, hair salons, et cetera, cannot still be open, a message to those owners in Center County at least, especially since we were in the yellow phase, they can't open yet, but some who maybe are, would want to see, oh, well, they're doing this, so maybe should we do the same? What would your message be to those owners?
I haven't heard, I mean, from my standpoint, I have not heard from owners who are taking that tactic, so I wouldn't want to give that line of thinking any, you know, fuel. So if there are businesses that have that concern, they can certainly reach out to our office, and we can get them in touch with the Governor's Office. But if they have strong concerns and strong feelings like that, they should be reaching out to the Governor's Office and making them aware of that. But from what we've seen in terms of the Troop G complement covering Center County, and then in terms of our local police forces, township borough police forces, there have not been many citations. There's been a few warnings here and there, but that was weeks ago. But the fact that we are in, we are moving towards the yellow phase gets us closer to that green phase. So, I mean, at the end of the day, if there are businesses that are concerned about not being able to operate in the yellow phase, we're very close to the green phase. So my goodness, if we were in the counties that were still red, I mean, they wouldn't even, they'd be further away from that green phase than we are. So, again, we're making progress every day, and again, the vigilance we take now is going to help us get to that green phase.
Just to follow up on that, it's not Center County, it won't get out, but in another county, the district attorney had stated of that county that they are not going to enforce that either. I would hope, you know, I guess you would hope as Commissioner that police and DA here in Center County would be a bit more forthright in enforcing the order.
You would have, in terms of our purview with this, we recognize the limitations we have, but I would encourage you to reach out to the district attorney to get his thoughts on that, and, you know, we don't want to be taking a position. We want to let him be able to answer that.
As the governor, has there been, I didn't read the note last night, specifically what it's going to take to go from yellow to green?
They have not outlined that yet. So I don't want to, yeah.
They don't have a timeline or-
Yeah, and there's no timeline, no guidance. But again, I think it's fair to say that that 50 cases per 100,000 residents within a 14-day period is probably a metric they're going to keep up at. But again, that, so that's really, the key thing is if we can stabilize and see the decrease. That's a huge part of it. But they're already able to do the contact tracing, having the PPE, and also the testing. So as that comes online, I would assume that they would, they would want to be taking, to see how we do in the yellow phase, and then potentially transition to green. So there's nothing hard and fast, but I think you can make some guesses about what that might look like.
Have you heard from any businesses? We were told in counties moving to yellow, the employees must be going back to work. A state will not be paying any unemployment. Have you heard anything from?
Can you say that again, Gary, in terms of?
If the county's going to yellow, like Center County, employees must be going back to work. If they file for unemployment, the state will be paying.
No, that's absolutely not happening. Yeah, that wouldn't be happening. It's on the employer in terms of if there's work offered. So if we, so if we as a county are not offering work, that's allowable under the unemployment. So that's not, now if we offer them work, and we say, you know, here's hours that you can fill, and they say no, that would then, then they would not be getting unemployment. But yeah, if there's not work and we're not offering it to them, they would still be eligible for unemployment.
Can someone give us an update on the Center County prison? Are there been more inmates released, more provisions taken in terms of the COVID?
Sure. So what we did is, starting Friday of last week, we've been putting daily numbers out about how many tests have been done for the incarcerated individuals, also for the staff as well. We've also been putting out the releases over, since March 23. That was really the high point we had with 236 individuals incarcerated. As of yesterday, we were at 147. So we've had, from a net perspective, about 90. However, we have some, we've had some intakes. So the total amount that have been released since late March is about 110, 115. But again, we've also had some intakes as well. So, and it has stabilized. The individuals who were, had reprieves, I guess you could say, due to COVID-19 and concerns for vulnerability, those have, most of them have been already through the system. And so as the cases, I'm sorry, as the court resumes and has the video hearings, and then also in person as we get a few weeks from now, you're going to still see that number decrease. But, so we're sort of stabilized right now at about, in the high 140s of our population, Center County and Artana County inmates as well.
Do you still have out-of-county inmates there? Have they pulled us, you still have?
We do. About 80, 80 roughly, yeah.
I know you have an Election Board meeting, but is there any update from last week in terms of getting volunteers or more polling places?
I don't, I haven't had the latest numbers, but we had quite a number of people reach out to us over the last week and indicate that they were willing to help. So I'm very encouraged that we'll be okay for Election Day. Now, the question is, and I think that's what we're waiting for some discussion from the state on, is what we're going to be required to do about staffing the boards. In other words, if we consolidate some precincts, which I believe we're going to be doing, and in that consolidation, how many board members do we need at each polling place? So that, we're waiting for the governor to give us direction. And then from the press conference yesterday, they indicated that this week we should have that answer. So hopefully, we'll be fully staffed come June 2.
Does anybody know Penn State students enrolled at University Park, but they're somewhere now? If they apply for a ballot now, are they still supposed to be voting in Center County, or do we know that at all? Has that been worked out?
If they're registered here.
Okay.
From a business standpoint, I know obviously we're in the process of going from red, you know, red to yellow, and we're not, we'll know more, you know, this Friday, have more information at that point. But in particular with mentioning the students being gone, the university still being closed, is it the case, is there concern at all that when a lot of these businesses open back up again, that there just won't be the same clientele? Obviously, it's still good that they're able to open up, but from a business, you know, for a lot of these businesses, particularly in downtown State College area and outside of that, you know, anything to be done from a financial standpoint or to help these folks out, because they're opening up, but they may be opening up to maybe one or two people coming through the door?
Well, we'll wait and see. I think, you know, there are, most businesses are very interested about taking the next step and opening up this Friday. So there's an interest there. It remains to be seen what their, you know, shopper volume is going to look like. Hopefully, it's a high volume, and there's people that are going out that are doing it in a safe way, that are being patient, and taking the time to support the businesses. And then businesses from that standpoint can reevaluate and see where we're at. But, yeah, they're, so they're rightful, they're absolutely, I mean, it's going to be a new volume they're going to be seeing. So, you know, I think it's a wait and see what it looks like. And, but I think that there's, frankly, there could be, you know, a benefit to having, again, I think, yes, I'll leave it at that. I think there is a benefit that they're going to see customers and shoppers supporting them. And again, it just needs to be done in a safe way.
To your point, Evan, it's going to depend very much on where they're located geographically and their clientele. There are some businesses downtown that mostly serve the locals, so I'm sure they're going to be open. They're probably going to be fairly busy. So again, patience and understanding and compassion from shoppers. I know people have been wanting to go out and return somewhat to normal. We're still not quite there yet. But yes, there's other businesses downtown where a large fraction of their business was pretty much students. I know the downtown State College Improvement District members are going to be having a virtual meeting later this week to discuss strategies and, you know, how they're going to move forward into the yellow phase. I'm sure in areas a little further out, Elphont, Snowshoe, Penns Valley, Phillipsburg, I suspect a good fraction of their business will return fairly quickly. But, you know, to Gary's point earlier, especially for those downtown businesses, if they call staff back, it's not going to be the whole staff. So some people will remain on unemployment, and they, just because we moved to yellow doesn't mean their unemployment benefits terminate.
I think one of the real things we need to be cognizant of, and our area's lifeblood is Penn State University. And I believe that the quicker that we understand that we need to be smart and safe about operating, that will influence Penn State's ability and decisions moving forward to their operations. And getting students back in the fall, getting some semblance of normalcy back into campus and onto football games and things like that is hugely important. And if we are smart now, and we use the opportunities that we have to show the state, to, you know, to show ourselves that we can be safe, and we can operate, and we can keep the numbers of COVID cases down, that's really going to influence the lifeblood of our community moving forward. Because it would be very shocking, I think, on so many different fronts, if Penn State is not operational come fall. And we need to be smart about it now. I mean, I know it's, a lot of folks are suffering, but we need to be smart. So in the fall, we can have, we can have our economy turned back around and get things to some semblance of normal again.
So in other words, the more vigilant Penn State is, or the more vigilant State College and the surrounding area are, the more likely Penn State can come back?
All of Center County. I believe that's a huge impact and a determining factor. So they have, they have the responsibility of 50,000 students. We have the responsibility of 160,000 residents. I think we need to all be smart about how we approach the future as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we look for a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter. Would it be personnel? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to go to executive session at 10:42.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay.